Well, Wayne's absence is noticeable.
All right, everyone, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you can help me with roll call, please.
Other person Henry?
Here.
Other person Chaffer?
Here.
Other person Valdi?
Here.
Other person Grimmer?
Here.
Other person Iker?
Here.
And then other person Dean and other person Price are excused. Mayor Atwell?
Present.
Administrator Hafner.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to number four, public hearing. For a public hearing, number one, topic, amendment to map seven dash four, City of Delafield 2030 master land use plan map, which is part of the 2030 conference of plan. Location, part of 1014 Canora Road, DLC 0798167002, and part of 333 North Lapham Peak Road, DLC 0798977001. Owner, Baron Properties LLC and American Legion Post Number 196, applicant James Barron. Matter, modify the land use plan designation on part of the 1014 Canora Road from medium density residential to institutional, and modify the land use designation on part of 333 North Lapham Peak Road from institutional to medium density residential to accommodate a transfer of lands between properties. Is there anyone that would like to speak to public hearing number one? Come on up.
I'm Jim Barron, 757 Garrison Court, Delafield, Wisconsin. And I'll talk because there's maybe a couple people here who have not reviewed what I, what we're proposing to do, so I'll take a couple minutes on that. And I don't know if you can move the, the screen to the plan for the subdivision, but I just want to talk about that briefly and how this fits in.
Is that in the package, am I presuming?
It's in the packet.
That's right.
I'll find the page.
Page 14 of the packet.
So that, we have reviewed this with the Plan Commission once or twice and public works, and this is not the subject of this public hearing tonight, anything, any approvals on that, but what we're asking for tonight is needed to, to take care of land trade that we've agreed to with the Legion. And so the subdivision is going to propose to extend Parkway out to Lapham Peak across from Jensen Court and create basically 29 lots. There's currently five lots that occupy this land. Years ago, there was a plan to kind of have the roads go straight across the southern boundary of the Legion, and there's a lot of neighbors that don't like that idea. It's on the city plan for, for thoroughfare. The Legion doesn't like it, the neighbor to the south doesn't like it, and now that we acquired this land, there's the option to kind of circulate it through here in a manner that's probably calms traffic, let's put it that way. Won't be the cut through it would have been. So we'll be talking about this at future meetings as we make the, the formal proposal, but because of timing, right now, if we acquire, we're going to acquire a small piece of property from the Legion on their west side, and we're going to give up 60 feet that we own that's south of the Legion. If someone drove by, they can't really tell where that is because they already use it for some of their current use. So the nature of this public hearing is just to clear those land use designations on the official map for the city, and that's why we're requesting this today.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to public hearing number one? Public hearing number one, go in once, go in twice. Public hearing number one is now closed. We'll move on to number five, approval of the following meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve February 20th, 2023 council meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll run to number six, City of Delafield citizens' comments. Any citizens like to make any public comments about anything on or off the agenda? Come on up.
For the record, I didn't come up for the public hearing, but the development that Barron's is doing, I think, is really nice. I like the curvy streets, and it will not be a race truck that it would have been otherwise, so that's real nice. City of Delafield has given information that'll be on the ballot, reference Lake Country Fire and Rescue, and I understand it because I've been to the meetings before. I did show pages, I didn't write what the page numbers were, but for Lake Country Fire and Rescue, there were a couple pages, and I'm glad to see that it's going to be on the, on the ballot. My husband was a little bit confused by saying it'll be a certain cost, but then taxes are going to go down, that'll make an adjustment. That's the way he reads it, and he wonders if we say it's going to be that way now, what guarantees it'll be that way in the future, that it'll be the continual savings on that? So there was a little bit of a question on that, and I get it. DNR, the meeting is going to be on Zoom later this month about the pier from Naguweka, and so it was nice that everything was included in tonight's meeting for that as well, and it'll be good to have more information. Thanks.
Great, thank you for the comments.
Uh, no address. Oh, you know, I don't know if you've got anything.
Suzie, Suzie Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. We haven't moved, and my husband is still there with me.
I typed it and it didn't actually.
Would like to make some comments?
Sure, this is the time to do it. Thanks for coming up.
I mean, so it's the first time I've seen it, so that's why, like, comments, like, I haven't looked at it long enough to make a comment. So I'm just wondering with, what's the definition of the density? What type of buildings will be going in these lots?
Yeah, so.
Can I get your name and address, please, sir?
Paul Abler, 1285 Jensen Court.
What is your last?
Abler, A-B-Y-S-N-B-OY-L-E-R.
Yeah, so the way the citizens' comments is set up is we're here to listen, but it's not really a two-way back and forth situation, so you can't really ask us questions. You can ask questions, and if later on the meeting they come up, we can try to address them for you, but we're basically just here to listen.
How do I find out answers if I want to get answers to questions?
What's that?
Yeah, the.
He's a good source.
The applicant behind you suggested during closed session, which is coming up in the meeting, you might speak with him.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, citizens' comments are now closed. Move on to number seven, matters for possible closed session. Seven A, motion to convene into closed session pursuant to the following provisions. One, motion to convene into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin State Statute 19.85. One C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, more specifically regarding the compensation of the new chief of police appointment. The council will reconvene in open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda. So do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I saw moved.
I'll second.
Mark and Danielle?
All right, roll call. Other person Henry?
Aye.
Other person Chaffer?
Here.
Other person Valdi?
Aye.
Other person Grimmer?
Aye.
Aye.
Other person Price is not here, sorry. Other person Iker?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going into closed session now. That means everybody that's in the room needs to leave. We'll be in closed session. We'll reopen the door, and then you're more than welcome to come back in for the rest of the meeting.
We're just waiting for Molly to come back. Ready?
Yep.
Oh, we're going. Okay. Welcome back. We're gonna move in from closed session into open session.
I will make a motion to move into open session.
Second.
All right, roll call. Henry?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye. I will now make a motion to set the police chief's salary effective on his starting date. Do we know what that is? Just say that it's on a starting date. Make the salary $110,000 with subsequent raise to occur following establishment of goals for 2024 and the budgeting process.
I'll second.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Great, we're on to number eight, consent agenda. You have a motion for 8A?
What does Henry on the second there, correct? For the salary?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm good with the motion to pass the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, I assume no licenses. We'll move on to B, planning commission. Mr. Iker.
Well, I was not present at our last plan commission, so mark your calendars. It doesn't happen very often. But so I ask that you look at the minutes or watch the video for any more details you want to get other than the two actions we have here to report on, and that is, or to act on, one of which was the subject of the open, the public hearing tonight. So I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 813, amending the City of Delphio's 2030 master land use plan.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
And item B2B deals with four tax keys. If you're familiar with the area, it is a little triangle just after, if you're heading east on Milwaukee Street. Once you pass Fishbones and the condominiums, a little shop there. There's a triangular piece of land between the Lake Country Trail where that cuts across and Milwaukee Street. And there's currently four parcels. And there's some numbers in the packet about how they demonstrate moving them into two parcels would make them a more palatable land to be developed perhaps into two homes. There's still some challenges in front of them, but what is presented is a CSM that makes them, that brings them closer. And that was approved by the plan commission, recommended to us by the plan commission. So I'll make a motion to accept the certified survey map to convert those four lots, D E L C 0802017 through, oh, I'll do the same all, 0802018, 0802019, and 0802980 into two lots.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
And again, there are a couple of different developments in the works for the city that people ask questions about. Please check the packets out, sign up for notify me. We have a meeting at the end, last Wednesday of this month. That's it for land commission.
All righty, we'll move on to C, Lake Welfare Committee. Mr. Price is not here. I know that they have a meeting this Wednesday, I believe. Okay, we'll move on to D, Park and Recreation Commission and Tree Board. Mr. Schaefer.
Park and Rec with the enhanced facilities going in to Liberty Park this summer, the stage. We're looking at, we're reviewing the park rental fee for Liberty Park for a possible increase. And May 21st is our annual review and inspection, the park walk. Entire commission will go onsite at all the parks and review for any needs or opportunities there.
And the public is welcome to the park walk.
Yes. Genesee Street Bridge is where we're meeting, over the river, 9 o'clock, 9 a.m. on May 21st for that. So everyone's welcome to join us.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, move on to E, Public Works. Mr. Grimmer.
Public Works, couple of things. We had discussed the Beacon Hills developments, discussing drainage, rain gardens, good feedback from the public, removing light posts for preserving the night sky. Little bit of talk on sidewalk placement. We also discussed traffic, speed calming ideas. We discussed measures of success if the council were to move forward implementing any of the ideas, some of those ideas being chevrons and reflective tape and feedback, speed signs, et cetera, and how we're gonna objectively measure the success of those projects, utilizing the speed enforcement data that's already, was already collected, potentially comparing that to new data that's received after those implementations, if they do take place. And then a resident survey of those folks that are concerned and have them subjectively rate the issues now and then after the fact rate them. So those traffic calming and speed calming issues on Milwaukee Street, that debate continues.
Were you going to have a meeting, right, with the neighbors? I thought Matt was awesome.
Yeah, we're planning, coordinating a meeting for public feedback and doing it in a manner where we direct mail the affected area surrounding Milwaukee Street and do it in a way that people could participate either by mail or some other means if they are unable to attend the meeting or then participate in person if they're able to come to the meeting. My court and I will be coordinating that.
Yeah, and there's a PowerPoint in the Park and, Park and Rec, in the Public Works packet to, that's gonna be put out there, presented. Anything else on traffic? Street improvement. Public Works approved Always Contractors as the winning bid for the 2023 street improvement program. That program addresses issues with Bleeker, Church, First, Second, and Third Street, Kettle Court. Also has additional alternatives on storm water, storm sewer improvements on Second, Third, and Church Street, as well as two paths on Genesee Street, to Oak, the Oakwood Carriage Street, Genesee Street path, and the Devonshire path. That was approved by Public Works and I will make the motion to award the contract for the 2023 street improvement program to Always Contractors in the amount of $803,127.80.
I'll second.
Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing to add is this is about, about $50,000 over budget. And the reason it's over budget is there are three alternative bids that we added for unanticipated drainage improvements required. Two of those improvements are on Second, Third Street and Third Street where we've got situations where there's not enough storm sewer inlets and there's storm sewer, storm water coming down the curb line, gaining enough velocity that it actually jumps the curb and causes flooding to some garages on those streets. So this will fix that. And then also on Church Street, there is an asphalt ditch that's gonna be replaced with a storm sewer. And so those three alternatives for additional storm sewer added up to about a $50,000 increase. And we are above $50,000 over budget, but we are more than $50,000 under budget for the 2022 street improvement program. And so we're proposing to use additional funds from 2022 program to fund the 2023 program.
Great, is there any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, we'll move on to Delahart. Mr. Iker.
We haven't had a meeting since our last council meeting, so don't have anything new other than to say that third Tuesday of this month is our next meeting.
Sounds good. Police Commission, Valdi?
No meeting.
No meeting? They mentioned they were looking at hiring a new person, so I thought maybe there might be...
That's already, yeah, that was in a previous meeting that we had approved that process. So we haven't had one since that process started.
Got it, got it. Thank you. Okay, Library Board, Mr. Henry?
No meeting since our last meeting.
Zoning Board of Appeals, I don't believe they've had a meeting. J, Promotion and Tourism Commission, Mr. Schaefer?
No meeting since our last meeting. Our next one is on the 14th of March.
Okay. Lake Country Fire Commission, refer you to their website. L, Lake Country Fire Board and Rescue, Mr. Grimmer?
No meeting, no report. Next meeting is the 15th.
Sounds good. Dear, if we can get the agenda changed to get rid of this other committee, commissions, and boards and just list M as Dear Management Committee. Mr. Henry?
Yeah, our meeting was canceled for lack of
Yeah, our meeting was canceled for lack of forums, so no meeting, no report.
We'd actually take, take an ordinance change, I believe, to change what you're asking for Kent, because right now the city code identifies the exact order that things are supposed to be on the agenda, and it lists all the committees, and Dear Committee didn't exist when that was put together, and then at the end, and then it says other committees. So we would need to change the code to include Dear Management Committee and the committees that are listed and where it should be placed in that order.
So add it to the list.
Will do.
And I'll remind you, 2023 is the year of the list.
It was a different list, this is no zoning.
Okay. Ten, no unfinished business. Eleven, mayor's report, no report from the mayor. Twelve, new business. A, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of the public education document related to the City of Delphio referendum for a fire protection and emergency medical service fee and the distribution of the document. Mr. Hafner.
Yeah, so the document in the packet is what we've come up with, it's something that I originally drafted, and then it's been under the scrutiny of the mayor, several of the alderpersons, the fire chief, and I believe this was version number five that we landed on, and it's a draft for consideration by the council to be approved, and if it's approved, we will move forward and make it into a public document. And then the other thing to discuss is whether or not we want to fund the direct mailing of the document to all city households, which would probably be at an expense of about $2,000 to $3,000.
Well, I'll take that last part first, if you don't mind, just to make a case for it, because we'll decide later. I know a lot of the, what went through my mind when we were faced with this situation with trying to decide how to take this message to, to the citizens and when, it was pretty instantly determined that it was, it was important to get it on the April ballot for a couple of reasons. One is it's going to be a ballot with a, uh, election with a decent amount of turnout, and that's what we want. We want as much feedback as we can get, and that will, that's going to be the biggest election we have this year. And the other one is a special election would cost a few thousand dollars. So I don't have a problem saying that that few thousand dollars to educate would be worthwhile to get the message in the mail, because although I say it's a large turnout election, it's still going to be in the 40s or 50% range is my guess, and we want to get those other 50% at least aware that might not otherwise vote. So that's, I'm in favor of allocating the money and getting this message out into people's hands, because saying it's on the website isn't necessarily good enough for everyone who are saying, look at a newspaper which has a circulation of a few hundred for the city, isn't either. Anyways, I'll just throw that out there first as my two bits on whether or not we should spend the $2,500.
I agree.
And I'll add, there's, oh, go ahead, Mark.
An important message awareness to get out there for people to make an intelligent decision when they vote on the referendum. I think a couple thousand dollars to get, to fully educate them is a bargain.
And I'm a big fan of the letter, what was, what's been presented. I mean, we had some goals, and it was keep it two pages, a front and back and one page, have some numbers in there, but not, you don't have to be an accountant, but also have links to more information and more FAQs. Someone in Citizens Comments mentioned, well, there's a fee, and then there's an offset based on a tax levy. It's mentioned in here a couple times, if you read it slowly, you should pick up on it, and then an FAQ page will definitely help you understand, hey, if my house is worth, I happen to be in a half million dollar house, you know, it's going to cost me about $200 or $250 and not the whole 450 based on the tax credit. So that type of information is real helpful, I think. I don't have much, I don't have much to add about critiquing the letter. I brought my best critiques to the suggestions that were made, so I'm good with the way it is.
Yeah, and to Tim's point, there's a QR code in there that you can just scan with your phone if you're youthful enough to understand how that works. There's a link that you can type, and we discussed four or five different other documents that would be available on the city website to get more information than the front and backside of a letter. But I think it's important that we at least mail it so they are informed. I think it's pretty unbiased. We really tried hard to just make it factual and allow you to make the best decision for you and your family on how you want to vote for this, and more information is available on the website if you want to dig deeper. And we know we have those kind of folks in the community that absolutely will dig deeper, but we also know we have other ones that will be very thankful they read through this letter.
My thought would be, is there anything we can put, like, a stamp or letter wording on the envelope that says what it is, like the referendum information or something like that, so that when they get the envelope, it's obvious what this is?
We talked about making sure the envelope was city letterhead.
Well, yeah.
City Delphio, I think that gets people's attention.
Molly, do you know what our printer's capability is for things like that? I'm not even sure if they've used our envelopes previously.
Haven't. I'm not exactly sure what the plan would be for this. I'm thinking they would, it would be similar to like the communicator, perhaps, and that it would be like the document on the inside, kind of folded up, and then on the outside be like the mailing information where it has the, kind of the one page with the City of Delphio and the residential information, and then maybe the back page could be it. But we would have to.
This is just going to be a letter going in an envelope.
In an envelope.
And then the question is, do we know, and I'm guessing your answer is no, do we know if they can, A, put it in a city, can we provide them the envelopes with their logo on it? And B, could we stamp referendum information on it or something like that?
That, that is not the practice that they've done in the past, and I'm not sure that's the pricing that they provided.
Yeah, maybe.
So I think we would have to look into exactly what the intention is and what are trying to send out, and I'm sure that we can direct them to do whatever we would like them to do.
I just think it's important, I think, people, for, to make sure they're, even if we're sending it, that they're actually going to read it.
Doesn't look like another credit card offer.
Yeah, that it doesn't look like junk mail or something, like, we want to make sure they know it's important that, that they open it.
I think we're a big step in the right direction by using the City of Delphio logo envelope, because people don't usually get those. So I think that would stand out, and then if we can go the extra mile and, I don't know, I'm imagining this thing like on a TV commercial, red stamped, it says referendum on it.
Anything that we can do to make that stand out a little bit more, yeah.
Just keep in mind the printing company, to keep costs, you know, as low as possible, everything's automated, so we got to make sure that their automated system is compatible with our envelopes, you know, the, the whole printing, addressing, it's all implement, all automated, and the folding of the letter and things like that. So, you know, what I'm hearing is, you know, A, we want the City of Delphio envelope if at all possible, and B, some kind of a referendum information stamped on the envelope if, if at all possible.
If possible, yeah.
Something compelling. Winner.
You've won.
Congratulations.
That might actually go the wrong direction.
Actually, top secret, do not read.
So I'm just wondering if, and I, for clarification purposes, as I'm, we're working with the printer, would it be palatable or maybe even more palatable to have, as I was describing earlier, something like the communicator going out where it's like the folded document, where they would open it up and, you know, have the two sides, as opposed to being a letter in an envelope? I, I don't know what, you know, would be more likely to read. I think that's usually when I've gotten that information in the mail, that's how I've kind of seen it. So that's what I was picturing, not, not a letter, so I just don't know what would be.
This document's fully loaded on both sides, no place for address or?
Well, I would think maybe that it would be like, end up being basically a four-page document, where the outside page, the, the inside page would be like the referendum information, and the outside page would be the addressing information. I, I'm not sure, but.
I would think, I would just submit whichever is less expensive, just as long as we have some kind of notice on the outside, referendum information. So if it is less expensive to do something, because I think I get what you're saying about the communicator, like someone opened up and it's right there, and, and read it, would, you know, whichever's less expensive, just make sure we go, hey, read this, this is about the referendum. You know? If it's an envelope and putting the one pager double-sided or printed, then we'll do it that way, but on the envelope, you know, something that says referendum.
Either one is fine.
Read me.
Isn't the communicator?
Second-class.
Yeah.
Neither format, I think, is fine.
Isn't the communicator delivered slower?
Yeah.
Than letters? Because our goal is to get these to, in people's mailboxes by March 14th.
Because they could vote on the 15th.
I didn't think it was delivered any slower.
We can check into all that.
It goes to the mail, we, you know, we get a special rate because of how it's done, but I wasn't familiar, I, it's usually mailed out. I don't know. I wasn't aware of any delay in it. It goes to the post office, and then the residents are getting it a couple of days later, as far as I knew.
So staff will check into all that.
Yeah. Any changes on the content of the letter since a few of you got to see it that maybe hadn't seen it before?
Mark, you left me a message earlier.
One, just one for consistency. Time I'd come up with a good revision to the reference to, this would also remove more than $700,000 of the city's current contribution in Lake Country Fire and Rescue. For consistency, we, we referenced that number two other times. The fourth bullet, page one, I would replace the last sentence with, "The fee will be partially offset by a reduction in the city's property tax levy of more than $700,000." And we reference that number again in the impact of a yes vote paragraph. I would change the last sentence in that paragraph to, "The fee system will also result in a reduction in the city's property tax levy of more than $700,000."
Seems to follow.
That just makes it consistent, so we're saying it, saying it the same way.
Yep.
Avoiding confusion of what do we really mean, I think.
Sounds good. Any other changes to the letter? All right, it says possible action, we make a motion that we're going to mail this letter out to the citizens of the City of Delphio, residential citizens.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mark? Got it? Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, we're moving on to 12C, Approval of Vouchers List.
We gotta do 12B.
Oh, did I miss, sorry about that. 12B, Discussion Possible Action on Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Delphio and Waukesha County Regarding Municipal Recycling Dividend Program. All I want to know is, are we going to start getting some money?
Yes. So this agreement before you, well, first let me start by saying, all the municipalities that participate in the Waukesha County recycling program used to reliably get an annual dividend for the value of the recyclables. That was terminated in 2020 due to the economy with recyclables, and so it's been three years that we have not received a dividend, but the program's finances have improved, and we formed a working group of several community leaders throughout Waukesha County. I was on that group to work on this agreement, and basically what this does is it turns dividend distribution into more of a business decision. It used to, you used to make dividend payments even if they were performing poorly. And so now what's going to happen is, if their end of the year surplus is three and a half million dollars or more, they will make a dividend payment. If it's between 3.5 and 3.1 million, they may make a dividend payment, and if it's below 3.1, they could assess a tipping fee against the municipalities.
Oh.
But it is, it has grown to, I think it's about 300 or 400,000 dollars above that 3.5 million dollar threshold, so once we sign this, we will be getting a dividend in, in 2023 for 2022.
Is, is there anything that, that the, the users of the recycling program can do to make their efforts more profitable? In other words, are there like the top two worst things people put in their recycling bin that cause them lots of aggravation that we could help educate people about?
So the, the very, the top one is people putting plastic bags into the recycling stream, and that gets, there's a lot of rollers involved at the material handling facility, and those get caught up in the rollers, clog things down, shut down the line, and they're very problematic. So, plastic bags, people, people should not be bagging their cans and then throwing the bag of cans in there, and then you have some people that just throw all their pick and save plastic bags into the bin. The garbage collectors are trained to try to look for that, but there's only so much they can do when they're working as efficiently as they are, and so that's the number one thing. And, you know, number two, I would just say, making sure that what you're throwing away in the recyclables is amongst the things that are supposed to be recyclable.
One or two.
No, one does not get recycled.
Well, the common ones, whatever they are, two and three.
So when you recycle things that aren't supposed to be recycled, it decreases the quality of the finished product and decreases the amount of money that we can sell that product for.
If there's something that, that group puts out that we can put in our communicator, that'd probably be.
I think we do it almost every time.
There is, on our website, it's on the, we, we direct.
Put it in an envelope so we open it up and read it. No, I know that there's things we can do better, so.
Well, the volume, too, right? If we recycle twice as much as we're recycling now, we'll get more money, probably.
As long as it's the right stuff, yep.
As long as it's the right stuff.
I'm glad we'll get something, probably.
Yeah, with that being said, I'll, I'll bring something forward, maybe as, as my part of my update for one of the coming, upcoming meetings with information about the appropriate things to be recycling and things like that.
All righty.
Do we have to act on this?
We do.
So it's just an approval of the agreement?
Correct.
I will make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Delphio and Waukesha County about our municipal recycling dividend program.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Now we're on to C, Approval of the Voucher List.
Who to approve the voucher list?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, 13A, City Administrator.
Yeah, just one quick update with regards to the St. John's Pure Permit Application, and that we are on to the public hearing stage of that, and the DNR has scheduled that public hearing, they're still doing everything via Zoom, and that public hearing has been scheduled for Monday, March 27th at 3:00 via Zoom, and the link for that Zoom meeting is in the public hearing notice, which is in the packet.
And if you can't make it, you can write. The DNR has a window, I think it's even 10 days after the public hearing, you can send comments to them.
That's correct.
Some folks, yeah, might not be able to make that meeting for work or whatever reasons, so they can write.
That's all I have.
Great. All right, City Clerk, Collection Review.
Okay, the voter turnout was 33.71%, which is really high for this type of an election. That was 1,834 of the 5,440 registered voters that we had going in. We were. We were spot on with our voters that walked through and our counts, so everything went great with Badger Books. We got the printers working, up and running. We're really excited to have those ready for the next election, which is April 4th, 2023.
Excellent. Okay, City Treasurer, I'll refer you to the report in the packet. D, Council Request for Future Agenda Items.
You already have the Dear Management, or the, to update the ordinance, let's...
It's on the list.
You know what, I'm going to be on vacation, so I'm not sure if that'll be ready for the next meeting or not.
Meeting after that?
I can commit to that. We might still get in on the next one, we'll see.
The ordinance was already written once to put in the other committees, so it's not too difficult.
Sounds good. If anything else comes up, just reach out to staff. Okay, 14, Correspondents, PSC Broadboard and Digital Equity Planning in the packet, and Data CP Waits and Measures Report also in the packet. All right, seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 8:27. Thank you all for watching, or coming.